Go ahead, Harry. Oh, you're muted, Harry.
Thank you. Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. And today is April 15, 2021. Now, Crescent Valley Town Council General Meeting now is in session. Rock call. Jeffrey?
Yeah, we're good. We have a call.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Joe, can you give us the honor of this flag salute? Joe?
I'm not on mute.
Okay. Can you give us the honor?
Place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance
to the public and to the public for which it stands. One nation under God,
Thank you, sir. Okay. We did the recall. Okay. Item number five, approval of March. General meeting minutes, which is passed through by our secretary, Jeffrey via email. Do I have a motion to prove?
Motion.
No move.
No move. He did a great job.
Yeah.
Yes, Jeffrey, you did an incredible job. Thank you, Jeffrey. We've moved by Souffol is seconded by Carrie. Please note. Okay, item number six, approval of April agenda that you have in front of you. Just have one addition on that is on community report would like to add presentation proclamation of the Armenian genocide, which will be presented by council member Souffol here. Other than that, do I? Okay, arm move, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An objection? Okay, community report. Souffol, go ahead. And we have present Ms. Alice Chalian from ANC, a law crescent chapter. Ms. Alice, are you here? Alice?
She's there, Harry.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much.
It's good to see you, Dr. Chalian. It's been, it's been too long since we were last in person. But I'm here to present the proclamation of the Crescent Valley Town Council. But before I, I do that, I want to, I want to speak a little bit about April as genocide awareness and prevention month. We talk about never again. It was uttered after the Holocaust. It's actually come to mean over and over again as genocides continue today and in many parts of the world. April is designated as genocide awareness and prevention, and it's really about the past and current genocides. And we have to remember those who have been affected and engage in advocacy to prevent future atrocities. This genocide awareness and prevention month is recognized in Minnesota, California, Ohio, New Hampshire, and Texas. So I'm very grateful that in our state here, it's recognized. And just to say a few words about all the genocides that have happened in the month of April, April 3rd is the Darfur genocide. April 5th is the anniversary of the siege of Sarajevo, Bosnia. April 7th is the Rwandan genocide remembrance day. April 12th is the Holocaust remembrance day. April 17th, near and dear to my heart, is the anniversary of the Cambodian genocide. My wife and I are survivors of that genocide. And so it's present, it's literally from the 1970s and still haunting the Cambodian community. And of course, April 24th in nine days is the Armenian genocide remembrance day. And today I'd like to on behalf of the Crescent Valley Town Council, share on screen the proclamation that we have put together for the Armenian genocide remembrance day. And it says, the Crescent Valley Town Council proclamation. Whereas the Ottoman Empire initiated an eight-year program of terror and mass execution beginning in 1915 that resulted in the deaths of more than 1.5 million men, women, and children of Armenian heritage. And whereas this campaign of dislocation and murder was undertaken with a clear and ultimate purpose to annihilate the Armenian race through a practiced policy of coordinated deportation and massacre. And whereas this human tragedy is touched by the most repugnant elements of hatred, intolerance, and inhumanity. And we must be vigilant in our efforts to ensure that such atrocities are never again forced by one people upon another. And whereas only in recent years has the truth surfaced and been recognized regarding the heinous acts perpetrated against the Armenian people and the great number of deaths that resulted from this policy of genocide. And whereas this year marks the 106th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. And once again, we have an opportunity to recall this tragedy and rededicate ourselves to ensure that no act of such horrible magnitude will ever occur again. Whereas the Armenian National Committee of America, ANCA, is the largest and most influential Armenian-American grassroots political organization. And the ANCA Crescent Valley Chapter actively advances the concerns of the Armenian-Americans on a broad range of issues in our community. Now therefore, I, Harry Leon, speaking for Harry here, president of the Crescent Valley Town Council, on behalf of the town council, do hereby acknowledge April 24, 2021 as a day of remembrance on the 106th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. And I urge us all to join in activities being held in this community to commemorate the solemn observance signed by Harry and myself as corresponding secretary. Thank you. And really, again, it's, it's, it's a it's a coincidence that April turns out to be this month of horrible tragedies for a lot of people around the world, including the Armenian people, the Cambodian people, and all the the people who've suffered genocides. But I, I share certainly in the pain and and want to communicate that to you, Dr. Chalian. Thank you.
Dr. Charlie? Alice?
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Crescent Valley Chapter of the Armenian National Committee, and also on behalf of the Crescent Valley Youth Center on Honolulu, I thank the Crescent Valley Town Council for this annual heartfelt and thoughtful remembrance of the Armenian genocide in particular and other instances of man's inhumanity to man genocides of the last, at least a century. I don't want to talk too long, but I would like to thank you again. And I would like to acknowledge the efforts of educators and mentors in our community. I see our Glendale superintendent here on this, on this meeting. The Glendale Unified School District's efforts in education about genocides in general, genocide prevention, the scientifically studied 10 or so stages of genocide, of which one of the last ones is denial of the genocidal acts. I cannot thank you folks enough for remembering again on this solemn and sort of historic occasion. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate the contribution of the Armenian-American community that present to us, especially La Cressana Valley and United States in general. Thank you very much. And thank you, council member Souffol, for this wonderful presentation, sir. Okay. Let's move on. On item number A, youth council. Ms. Hamillion? Hello, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Once again, my name is Celine. And just to give a report on the youth town council for the past month, we are planning to, we have two committees currently on two different drives. So we have an art contest, our second one coming up for this year. And our committee is already going to start working on it this weekend. And by the time we meet next month, it's going to already be underway. And we also have a second committee for a spring cleaning drive that we're going to do during the month of May, probably during the time of the EOT. And it's just going to be a spring cleanup drive where we can do lightly used clothes and just donate and have a clothing drive. And other than that, we are just planning those two events.
Okay. Can you tell us the date of your meeting takes place?
Our next meeting is May 11, I believe.
Same zoning, same zoning credentials, correct?
Yes, same thing as this.
All right. Thank you very much, Selena. Job well done. Okay, next item is the Sheriff Department. Do I have Deputy Martin present? Or anybody from the Sheriff Department? Okay. Third item is Los Angeles Fire Department. We haven't received anything from Maria yet. But anyway, do I have any rep from PIO from Los Angeles County Fire? I guess not. Okay. CHP, I know I saw CHP here. Officer Cooper is not here, but I think he had a new officer, correct?
He's here.
I will patrol. Oh, Cooper is here. Sorry. Hey, how you doing, officer? Hey, Phil?
Officer Cooper's actually here. I'm logged on. Are you there?
Yes, we saw you.
Good. Officer Keller is also on here as well. So I was going to start off by giving the stats for the month of March. For the month of March, we had WhatsApp? Can you hear me or no?
Really choppy audio. Maybe turn off the camera.
Yeah, just turn off the video, maybe?
Are you there? Officer Cooper, are you there? Okay, I don't see him. I lost them.
Hi, good evening all. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
All right, I'm Officer Keller. I work at the same station as Officer Cooper. I'm his replacement. I've just been doing it for about a week. Officer Cooper and I have been working on the stats today. He has the paperwork to give the numbers. I'm just guessing he got logged off somehow. But I'm sure he'll be back shortly. Wish I could give you the numbers right now offhand, but I can't. Do you guys have any questions or concerns I could assist with? Start with that.
Well, first of all, welcome. We have a couple of new officers now we, I see on the freeway. So what's it, what's the total addition that it added to our sector?
Of CHP officers?
Yes.
Over the last year, we've got about 11 new officers. Don't know the numbers exact, but we got a good handful of new guys out there to help with traffic.
I think Cooper is back.
He's back.
You muted.
Muted.
Okay, you got me now?
You got you.
All right. Sorry. Yeah, my computer was acting up, so I just had to switch to my phone. I couldn't get it to go through, so. I don't know where did Jeremy leave off since I missed the beginning of that.
Well, Jeremy was waiting for you.
Was he? Okay. So anyway, what I've got for stats for collisions for the month of March, we had a total of seven of those. We had five that were property damage only. We had one injury, and then there was one that was a hit and run. So, but it was property damage only, no injuries on the hit and run collision. Couple of things I wanted to talk about before I guess I officially introduce Officer Keller. You noticed, Harry, I've got the radar trailer up and back into La Cressana over there on La Cressana Avenue. So we're going to leave it there for a week or so, and then we'll find another location to go ahead and move it to. I'm, I'm thinking about moving it. Maybe over by one of the schools where we're starting to get a little bit of traffic flow around the schools. And so I'll put it over there. Unless you guys have a better idea, someplace you'd like me to put it. I know we got school back in session. And we've got some traffic concerns around the school. Officer Keller and I are going to go around to the schools next week and kind of talk to them a little bit and figure out if they have any specific problems they want us to address besides the ones that we see. So we'll be kind of making our rounds around to the schools next week. Our office is actually open now. You don't need to call from the front parking lot anymore and come in one at a time. They have the front office open, so you can come in if you have issues that you'd like to deal with at CHP office. And we're also open for doing our car seat installations again on Wednesdays by appointment only. So if somebody would like their car seat installed, they can just call the office and make that appointment. We'll schedule it for the first Wednesday we have available. The month of April is distracted driver awareness month. So we are out and focusing on distracted driving. The last stats that I could find that were available for, were from 2019, but just as a comparison, they've been gradually going up each year, it seems. But in 2019, in the month of April, CHP issued 19,850 citations just in the month of April for distracted driving in 2019 for distracted driving month. So we're going to be out there, we're going to be writing citations. So stay off your cell phones and hopefully avoid a citation. The month of May is going to be motorcycle safety month. So we just want to, the weather's starting to get better, and we just want to make people aware and remind them to be alert for motorcycles and share the road with them because there's going to be a lot more of them out on the road. And we want to try to avoid, you know, any traffic collisions. So the last thing I've got, we've got a DUI checkpoint, which is going to be scheduled as DUI checkpoint. That's going to be scheduled for the month of May. Or I'm sorry, yeah, May, and the location's going to, is to be announced on that day, but it's going to be in the Altadena area. So just be aware of that. The last thing I had was I just wanted to introduce Officer Keller. So this will be my last month as the community officer at the Altadena area. So Officer Keller is going to be taking over for me. And so I'll let him go ahead and say hello to everybody. But moving forward, if you have traffic concerns, you can just call the office, ask for Officer Keller. The number at our office is 626-296-8100. And just ask for Officer Keller, and they'll put you through to his desk. So Keller, you want to go ahead and say hi to everyone?
Well, again, I said a little hello when you're having your technical difficulties. I said, I'm the new community relationships officer, and I'm looking forward to seeing what I can do and working alongside with you guys to help our community stay a little safer and be proactive and keeping the safety high.
Well, nice meeting you, sir. And I'm sure we're going to be seeing more of you. But it would be nice if, when everything is normal and all that, and we can introduce you to our council and also to the community. And we'll discuss the issues that Officer Cooper tackled throughout the years. And also without forgetting, Officer Cooper was very tremendous help to our community for the last, if it's not four or five years. We thank you for all the hard work that you gave to our community, all the special attention that you gave to our community. We are proud to know you as a good friend and also as a bright officer in CHP. Thank you, Officer Cooper, and looking forward to work with Officer Keller. And we wish both of you the best and keep up the good work. Thank you, Harry.
Thank you, Officer Cooper.
There's a request in the chat to repeat the CHP phone number, please.
It's going to be 626-296-8100. And I'm still going to be around. And Harry, you got my info to get ahold of me. So if there's issues you guys need to talk to me about, I'll still be around the Altadena office. I'm just not going to be working the community portion of it anymore. So.
Okay, thank you. And Officer Keller, thank you very much for being part of the great community.
My pleasure.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We move to next item, CV chamber. Do I have anybody from CV chamber? Nobody from CV chamber. Okay, CB cert? Paul Dutton? Okay, next. CV ready? CV fire council? All right, CBCA? Grant?
Grant, everyone. The upcoming CBCA meeting next week, Thursday. I'm sure the land use committee has been busy as we are. We will have more land use issues with the housing elements for Glendale, Crescent Valley, and Los Angeles on our agenda. Also, we got notice today of a new 78-unit apartment project that is on Foothill that will be on the site of the previous Trader Joe's location. So we will have new information on that. But it does appear that Foothill Boulevard is seeing a lot more development. And we will try and stay up on that and work with the land use committee to share information. But our meeting is next week, Thursday evening, 7 o'clock via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to Grant? Okay, we move to next item is Glendale Unified School District. I see our board member Jennifer Freeman and also our great superintendent, Ms. Hsieh Chin.
Yep. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Freeman, would you like to go first, or would you like me to share?
Oh, why don't, why don't you go first? Yes, you have, you have the details, so.
Great. So I'm pleased to share that for the last three weeks, our elementary students who wanted to return to in-person instruction have been back. And we started on the 29th of March with the TK2, and then on April 5th with third through sixth grade. And we're hoping that on April 26th, our middle and high school students will be returning on campus, particularly those of course, who wanted in-person instruction. And we're continuing virtual learning for the families and students who wish to continue the school year in a virtual setting. I'm also very pleased to report that as we are now in orange tier and hopefully moving in three weeks to yellow, by the time it's graduation time, we will be able to offer in-person graduations still physically distant, still with masks, but with a larger number of family members and extended family in settings that are conducive to graduations, and our students deserve the best. So in light of that, tomorrow, at partnership with Glendale Memorial, we are offering vaccination opportunities Pfizer for our graduates and a minimum two of their family members or individuals that they care deeply for that they would like to take with them to graduation. So as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, we had 1,800 individuals already signed up. And we're thrilled because we are calling it destination vaccination, destination graduation. Because when we have large crowds of individuals coming together in outdoor settings and still physically distanced, we don't want there to be a perception that individuals attending this event will be in danger. And certainly vaccinations are always voluntary, but it's the right thing to do early on. So that by the time we move into graduation season, we've given every family and extended family member the opportunity to sign up and will continue to do so until the last person somehow connected to Glendale Unified School District has been offered the opportunity for vaccinations. And these are the high-level reports. Of course, I'm always available to respond to your questions. Ms. Freeman, do you have anything that you wish to add that I may have neglected to?
The only thing to add is that athletics have begun again. And so we are competing, we are having football games, and we are starting very slowly to have some small numbers of spectators. Pacific League has reopened for a very limited number, kind of on a pre-signup for spectators. And so that, that's been exciting for some of, some of our parents who, again, as I know some of us here have, have been used to watching our kids play every game since they were little. So to be able to have that opportunity once again has been very exciting.
So if the student was vaccinated and the family would like to, they are welcome to sign up. The sign up is still available right now as we're speaking. And by all means, the more members of our community take advantage of vaccinations who wish to be vaccinated, the happier we are. And we will have additional opportunities. We've reached out to Vertigo Hills as well. It's not letting you sign up, Adrian. So yes, you may, but it's better for you to sign up. So I have your email address. As soon as I'm finished speaking, I will connect you with Stacy Toy, who's helping us facilitate this. And we'll make sure that you're able to attend tomorrow for vaccination. That's all I have for now, but I really appreciate you. I hope that you share the excitement that we have that. Although we're maintaining six feet distancing and all the precautions that we have committed to our community and our educators that hopefully during the summer, as we're planning expanded learning and the fall, we will be able to bring all students back. I'm hoping, praying, and doing everything possible I can. And I know I have your support, which means a lot to me. And we did sign our memorandum of understanding with our teachers association. So we, I'm of course thrilled to be able to share that with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And behalf of the town council and myself, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you guys did all these years. I know it was a hard year, a very difficult year, not only to the JSD or entire community and entire country, but I know you guys were very resilient and came through, and we appreciate your hard work. Please give our best regards to entire staff and the Teachers Association for understanding the situation and, and from the point of view of, of the community and, and the parents' point of view. We thank you and looking forward to normal life. And I know we always had very collaborative things to do with each other. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you. We're stronger together. Have a great evening.
You too. Okay, next item is Land Use Committee. Inez?
Hi. Hi, everybody. I'm Inez Chasten, I'm with the Land Use Committee. Cheryl did the presentation last week. We have a little bit more information on the Los Angeles County housing element proposals. I think Cheryl explained to you that there's 31, 31 of 33 lots that are being selected in order to be owned to increase density. It would be roughly a total of 1,175 additional units, as they call, added to our community. Of course, we are added to our community. Of course, we are not very happy with this. They're concentrating it all on sort of on Florense between Ocean Boulevard and Montrose Avenue. We're trying to figure out what is the best approach towards responding to their findings. They have asked us to propose alternative sites. If we feel that those are not appropriate, it's a very difficult thing to really propose without really having done some planning studies. But anyway, we're working with it. We're hoping to work with CVC A and sort of get all communities together so that we can come up with some responsible solutions. But basically, they have to increase density. The lots that have been selected for density now have mums and maximums. Where in the past, there was a maximum only. So lots that were age thirty now have to be minimum twenty-two fifty, I believe. Lots that were fifty now are minimum fifty to maximum one hundred and fifty with a height of sixty-five feet for buildings. So it's really not compatible with our community at all. But for now, I think that's all I have. We have been in communication with the planners doing this housing update. They are also working at the same time on an ordinance that you can actually do housing on commercial by rights. So that means that there is no public hearing. The ordinance went into effect on April eighth and it includes some development standards for residential projects on commercial zones. That is to say, they're still trying to work out what the zoning regulations would be for development that is only residential in areas that are commercial. Typically, it's been multi-use, which means the ground floor remains commercial and then above is residential, which is really preferred in order to activate that commercial zone. But anyway, they're allowing all housing. They're figuring out what the requirements are for that. So they're working on it. The only thing I think that is somewhat comforting to know is that they have reiterated that no matter what, even after all kinds of development standards might be established, our CSD stands and will apply to any development that comes. Now, for those that don't know, what the CSD is, is the Community Standards District, which regulates development in certain zones within our community. Basically, it regulates R three, which is multifamily housing in lots that are currently R three. And it also addresses all development along the Foothill Boulevard corridor that is commercial. So that's kind of the parameters that the CSD contains. I think that's basically all we have on that. And really, the concern about the minimums that are being imposed because if you have a six-unit property and you decide, well, let me develop it as ten units, well, you can't. If you're gonna develop it, you have to stick to the minimum, which would be twenty. So they're increasing the density regardless. Now, this is the first step. They still need to do environmental reports and traffic analysis and all the studies that will go along with increasing density. And they tell us that when the community, the area plans get developed, then they will look at that. But once they upzone, it's really an uphill battle. Now, California State Law, we have Victoria Doe, I'm gonna butcher this, Doe Shuglian is a new representative.
Yeah, she's not in today. She's not in today.
She represents Assemblywoman Laura Freeman's office. We had Blake Dillinger previously. She came to our meeting. It was a brief time that she was with us, but she just wanted to introduce herself and basically told us thirty bills in the assembly that have to do with housing coming down the pipe. It is overwhelming. Again, these are all at the beginning stages, but she's hoping to be able to keep us informed. So there's no end to this increase in housing that is coming towards us. Of course, we voiced our concern that over densification is really not the right type of development for our community. But we're hoping to write a letter and that will probably come towards later on. Other than that, we have the development at twenty-four thirty-four Foothill Boulevard, which is on the corner of Foothill Boulevard and Sunset on the south side of Foothill Boulevard. The proposal is for a four-story, thirty-one-unit apartment building, two levels of septu-ary and garage. And out of those, so they're asking for a ten-foot height and there will be three affordable units out of the thirty-one. This is a by right project, which means it does not need a public hearing.
Inez. Inez.
Been working. The architect came and made a Can you hear me? Okay, give me a minute.
Inez.
Yeah, is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear.
We're running out of time.
Okay, well, so basically, on this project, our best hope is to be able to work with the developers and really emphasize the need to meet. The CSD, we're working on basically setbacks in the back of the property, proper setbacks. I am in communication with the planner Elsa Martinez and actually I'm having a meeting via Zoom this coming week because we have continued to emphasize what it is that the parameters of the CSD are and the fact that they need to meet them. So to some extent, this makes the development a little bit more benign. This, the presentation was published and we really did not have any community members come and voice their opinion or ask questions about the presentation that we had. So I just want you to know that it is a by right project and that the developer is working with us so that we can work with them so that they can meet the requirements of what the CSD is requiring. And we'll keep you posted on the outcome. We have not seen the final drawings. They're still in the process of meeting the requirements, which they haven't fully met at this point in time. So, any questions in that? No? That's it. I think that's how that's pertinent to us. We have a couple of CUPs for alcoholic beverages, but they have not come before us just yet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a long report, but we needed, the community needs to hear this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, community announcements. Our librarian. Ms. Wiggins.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Hi. So I just wanted to let you know that we are opening for limited in-person services beginning on next Tuesday. We will be moving to a Tuesday through Saturday schedule. We will still offer sidewalk service. It'll be exclusive on the first hour of our service, but people can call throughout the day if they don't wanna come in to pick up their library items. We will be happy to check them out and have it ready for them at the door. So when I say limited in-person services, mask mandates apply, the social distancing's apply. We have a limited number of people that can be in the building at one time. Right now, our numbers are set at thirty, thirty customers. And because of the way our computers are configured, we've had to remove about half of them out of the, out of use. So we have a limited number of computers and as such, we have moved our computer hours, the time to be able to use computers from two hours a day to one hour a day. So if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you very much. And you did it exactly less than two minutes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
All right. Next is Park and Rec. Do I have anybody from Park and Rec? No. American Region, BFW? No. Prom Plus? Okay, next is Firehouse. Anybody from the Firehouse? Okay, item number nine, just wanna acknowledge CB, CBWD General Manager, Mr. Ochoa, is not going to be with us, but he did send his general, I mean, Chief Engineer, Mr. David Gold, David? David, are you around?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello, everyone. Hello. Thank you, Harry. I'd like to thank also the CB Town Council and the community at large for coming out tonight. My name is David Gold. I'm the Director of Engineering for Crescent Valley Water District. I've been the Director of Engineering for the last twenty-four years, so I've been up here a while and I understand the community very well. What I wanna talk today about is what we're doing, putting together what is called the Local Hazards Mitigation Plan. And if it's okay with Harry, I was gonna take over the screen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Need a second to get set up? Harry, can you see that? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, as said before, I'm David Gold, Crescent Valley Water District. And we're gonna talk about our local hazards mitigation plan tonight. We're gonna talk about, I'll give a little bit of a background. I'll get the elements of the hazards mitigation plan, a steering committee we've put together. What are our goals and objectives, type of events that could happen? The survey we did with the community, what the results will be doing with the plans so far and some projects coming up. Didn't wanna go and show CBWD's mission statement to provide quality water and wastewater to the community and what our vision is. A little background, CBWD is working with the Cal, California Government of the Bremel Services. We call it CalOES and FEMA to look at the grant funding for emergency preparedness. There are grants available through the four oh four hazards mitigation grant program. Currently, right now, FEMA is looking at providing three-point-seven billion dollars of grants available nationwide communities to help with, help with what we call mitigation or pre-mitigation disaster plans to put together infrastructure in place to help us during an event like an earthquake or wildfire. And for us to be eligible, we need to put together the local hazards mitigation plan. The local hazard mitigation plan looks at potential high priority hazards in our area and vulnerable infrastructure that could be damaged during a natural or man-made event such as drought, power shortage, earthquake, which is very near and dear to our hearts up here, wildfires, which we've all been experienced through, the station fire in two thousand and nine. The district went to apply for a grant in March of two thousand and nineteen and we were approved in April two thousand and twenty. Grant was totaled to one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, where FEMA is gonna be paying us approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand and forty-two thousand dollars from the district. We retained the engineering firm Tetra Tech to help prepare us. Tetra Tech has done a number of these hazard mitigation plans throughout California and actually throughout the nation. Part of the elements of the hazard mitigation plan that we're putting together is the first thing we had to do was put together a steering committee. This committee was made up of community members and local agencies to help us oversee the development, the outreach going up. We went and created goals and objectives of what we wanted to do. And we've been meeting on a monthly basis and the meetings are open to the public. We also have meeting minutes that are available on our website at cbwd.com. So in case you wanna go and read what we've been doing, take a look at that. From there, we're developing a mitigation strategy. We're looking at what are we gonna do when that event happens? It could be an earthquake, it could be a power outage from a windstorm, it could be from a, from a earthquake. So we're looking at what are developing, what are exposures? And then we're gonna look at our risk or vulnerability. What happens? As we're looking, we're just concentrating on water and sewer. So if an event happens like a wildfire, what's gonna happen at your house? Will I have water? Will I be, my sewer system still work? What will happen? And that's what we started looking at. We looked at what vulnerabilities we had. And we prioritize the hazards that will occur within the area. We start preparing maps to look at the areas affected based on studies, seismic studies within the LA County region. What will happen? There's a lot of information provided from Northridge quake, Warrior quake, Subar quake and so on. Then we go and review what our assets or inventory is and see what, where there are in their useful life. And if there's something we can do to improve it, so if this event should happen, we'll be ready, ready to go. And then as we move forward into the future, we need to maintain and monitor and evaluate this plan because this is a living document as we move forward, but it's gonna be changing as we move forward. As I said before, we put together steering committee, we sent out an email requesting people from the community to, if they'd like to get involved. They said, there's our website in case you wanna look up more information. We have eleven people on our committee. We got Director Reck of a Chair. She's our chairperson and also President of CBWD Board. Mr. Leon is our Chairman Vice President. We have James Bonner, another Vice President with the Board. Paul Dutton, which you're aware of. Ken Herman is the District Engineer for Foothill Minnesota Water District. Doug Geister over at Lock Me Outta, Sean from City of Lock Me Outta Foot Ridge. We worked with Brian Hodge with the CB Fire Safety Council. I'm at the ghetto with Budno Water Power, Ian Hargrove from Glendale Public Works and Dave Weisoff, which is our conservation person and helping us with the environmental part of it. The first thing that the committee did is we set up what will be our goals for this plan. What are we gonna focus on, what are we goals? And during any of these events that happens, even man-made or natural events, we wanna make sure protecting life and property. We wanna make sure we maintain a central water and sewer service to all our customers. We wanna create increased public awareness of the risk out there with water and sewer service so the public can understand what they need to do during an earthquake or a firestorm. We wanna facilitate partnerships with stakeholders in the Crescent Valley. One of our goals is to be able to bring together City of LA, City of Glendale, unincorporated lockers of Lock Me, of Lockers of LA County, Lock Me Outta. So the whole, so we wanted to have the whole Crescent Valley would join together, work together to help us all through this. We wanna protect our local water supply, especially our groundwater wells because if we were lose our imported water supply, our only water supply we get is from a local resource. And we want to protect against the environment, against environmental concerns that caused by water sewer failures. One of the things we're concerned about is that during an earthquake, a sewer like could shear, causing a backup or sewer sewage spill down your street or, and then eventually gets a storm drain, eventually gets on the LA River. We wanna try to prevent that. So that's one of the things we're looking at. So these are the goals that were set off by the committee. And then we put in together our objectives. We want to implement activities to assist in protecting lives. We wanna protect water quality and supply. That's the other thing about it, water quality. We wanna make sure you have safe, clean water. It's not contaminated with bacteria or anything. We wanna address aging infrastructure. We've talked a lot about this in our board meetings about pipelines being over fifty years old. We wanna raise awareness and communication to the Crescent Valley community, what to do during a disaster event that you would need to go and get water or be able to have your sewer system work. Then we wanna be able to use this leverage to get grants. Uh, then we want to be able to use this leverage is to get grant funding. Out of that three point seven billion dollars, you want to be able to get some grant funding out there to help our community through the FEMA process. We want to establish policies to ensure mitigated projects are 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 for critical facilities. And we wanted to create rehabilitate, enhance and preserve any local environmental serves as and serve as natural. Hazard mitigation functions, so those were their objectives that we tried to do. So as you move forward, we're looking at different type of hazards, we look at hazards, natural hazards, such as earthquake. Wildfire, which again, we're all very familiar with the station fire, uh flooding and what I usually call the debris flows. After the fire, we had the debris's go down, especially if you remember Ocean View when they got flooded. Uh, we always want to be talking climate trade change, we got drought, which has been in the news lately and even human caused. Disaster such as terrorism, cybersecurity, there's been a lot of articles about that. Uh, people hacking into systems and other, uh, vandalism and, uh, actual damage from people trying to, uh. Her her facilities, so these are the things that we looked at as examples. Then we will, next thing what we did was we did a public outreach survey, we sent out over seven thousand emails, we asked you. The residents in the Crescent Valley, what are the most important issues to you? Uh, with to make sure that the district has the ability to react to a natural manmade disaster. Where do the customers get their information? And how informed customers are on mitigation managers and what preparedness they have to do. And all this feedback was reviewed by steering committee is all posted on our CBWD website, so if you want to get more detail on that. I just put in a couple of slides here of showing some of results. It was pretty interesting, well, we ask people what natural disasters, of course, pandemic is on everyone's mind. But the other thing with severe weather wildfires, uh, these are the things that are people's minds. And then as far as manmade ones, uh, big one was the planned or unplanned power outages, we've been seeing this. With S E coming out what they call the, uh, what their plan to shut down power during fire events, so they don't, uh. Or windstorm, so that we have, we're starting to deal with that from a customer standpoint and from a facility standpoint, so we need to be up on that. Another thing, another example, uh, question we asked is how prepared are you for a big disaster? Uh, it's pretty, uh, pretty, you can see, look at the statistics on there, people about average, uh, but we want to get out and people get, um. Get prepared to be ready for that earthquake, so they have that one to three day supply of, um. Of supplies ready and water ready, so that's one of the things that we want to get out. Uh, we also asked, where do you get your resource of become more prepared and we had listed a number of, uh. Emergency preparedness from LA County, from CERT, uh, and news and other media, um, outlets. And so you can see where most of the people get their information from. Uh, this was, I thought this was a very good, very good interesting thing is that the majority of the people. Who responded to it get a lot of the information from the internet or in TV, uh, and public awareness campaigns for such as the Great Shakeout. So this was interesting that now we have an idea of where people are getting their information from. And then we asked the question is how prepared do you think CBWD is? Uh, this was very nice, we saw that people, uh, forty-nine percent of people said we're prepared, but for us, we look at it. Is, um, we like to read, look at the thirty-eight percent that saying we're somewhat prepared and we like to do a better job. The other thing is that, uh, we want to know what's the best way to communicate with the customers with yourself, this is. If something happens or if there's a water quality issue or the water is outage on your street. Uh, how should we get back there and the highest percentages are from email, email, text messages. Which kind of leads into what another thing that we've been doing a lot, the way we're preparing a, an automated meter reading system right now, so we can read your meters. Uh, automatically you as a customer can come in too and go through the portal, be able to see your water usage. It allows us to be to contact you regarding any emergencies so that we can get that quicker later for mission quicker to you. The other thing was, the, um, question was, is it how long you can be, if you know how long you've got a water service? Uh, one to three days is typically the normal, we want to get it, uh, better so people know how to water the five to seven days. So what we did is we took this information, we took the survey, we took the, uh, the information about seismic and we went. And utilize this and we did, what is our risk for, uh, CBWD's assets, our inventory, our facilities? And we looked at it, we looked at, uh, different scenarios and the ones that came out really high on the list was. High, we were very high within area for wildfires. Uh, very high for landslides as a result, uh, through earthquakes or even movement of, of, uh, of rocks on their hillsides. And you can see, if you look at the slide, that a lot of our assets are very tied back into wildfires. In other words, if wild, this is what probably gonna have the most effect on our system or CBWD system. If we had a hot, a wildfire similar what happened in two thousand and nine. Now you see what what happened with landslides and earthquakes and that's on the water side. And then the sewer side, you can see, uh, what we, what, uh, what effects it has on the system. And when they talk about wastewater treatment plant, we have a treatment plant that's, um, that does treat all our water. It's at the LA Glendale Reclamation Plan located at the five and the one thirty-four. So that's in a high risk area for earthquake potential, so if something happens there, we gotta figure a way to make sure we can get our sewage. Out, uh, so we're not going into the rivers and the including the environment. So these are the some primary results we came from this, so. From this, we went and looked at what can we do for premitigation projects that we can go and send them out to water district to help our community out. So the first one we wanted to look at is getting additional emergency generators, these electric generators that we can put at sites. Uh, I always refer to pumping up the hill, but we have two thousand feet of elevation difference between our low point, although we have to pick its canyon. So we had to be able to move the water up and takes power to run the pumps. So one of the things we've talked about is getting additional generators and through FEMA's grant process, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So you can see as from the district level, what we're trying to do is utilize these grants to get these necessary equipment that we need to help us. Uh, in case of an event, so that was the first one was the generators, the second one is these, what we call seismic sensors and valve actuators. We put them on the inlet outlets of our large, um, tanks. Uh, what happens is that if it does sense a earthquake, I can't remember low, I think it's five point four greater. It actually goes and trips a relay and actually they close the valves of the reservoir. So if there's a main break down below, the water doesn't drain out and we can save the water in the tank. And these happen and they're on, they're on, the sensors are happening, uh, they're on twenty-four seven, so if something happens at two in the morning, we could shut down the, uh. Reservoir, save the water and be able to do the assessment, that way the community will still have water, uh, available to them as we move forward through that event. And then the last thing we were looking at is we want to do more emergency preparedness education. Uh, either through a website, more, um, training through, um, seminars so that we can put on in, out in the community. And the other thing we want to do is you want to go and look at putting it what we call refilling station or Rosemont Reservoir, which is next to Rosemont Middle School. So in case of an event, you can drive up with the car, bring your five gallon jug, we could fill it up and drive away. And that way you'll be able to get water, so we're gonna put in this filling station, again, we're gonna try to get FEMA money for that. What is our next steps? Our next steps were currently, the plan is currently being developed, we're about eighty percent done. And we're gonna do some internal reviews, uh, probably then towards the end of April, early May, we're gonna send it out for public notice. Our two week public, uh, public period for comments. Then we plan to send this, our plan to OES and FEMA for approval. And then once they get approved by FEMA and OES, then we'll go and have the ability to start, um. Applying for grant funding, which the opening date for that is September first, two thousand twenty-one. So at this time, I also want to do a little plug, next Wednesday, the twenty-first, we are having a public meeting for our local hazard mitigation plan. This you, everyone just got a little preview tonight, the meeting will actually be a little bit longer, explain a little bit more in depth what we've been doing. We invite everyone to come and join it to meet a Zoom meeting, uh, this is, uh, if you, this is here, we also post it on our webpage. Also on our Facebook page, so we hope you can come out, get some more information and come and listen to hear what we have to say. With that, I'll take some questions and answers, I do like to acknowledge the people of Crescent Valley Water District who helped put this together and the team at Tetra Tech. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions to Mr. Dave Gould? I just want to say a couple of words, oh.
I do have a question, hi Harry, this is Liz Ben Brooks. We're locker center residents, but we rent our house and our landlord pays our water bill. And so we don't actually get notifications from the water district, is there? Just like a kind of a general information list that we can sign up for so that we do get those notifications?
Sure, if you want to go and give us a call to the office and talk to Tessa, she'd be happy to take your information, we can add to the list. So next time we do a, um, uh, email blast, we'll be able to include you in that too.
Great, thank you.
That was a good question, seriously, there's a lot of, uh, rental properties around this area and, uh, the owner gets a notification, not the tenant.
Correct, and and the Harry, we we worked really hard to try to get both the tenant and the owner will do our notifications. If you feel you're not getting anything, please, uh, go to our website and there are forms to fill out, you can send it in there and we can definitely put it in our database, be happy to send you some.
Miss Benbrook, thank you very much for that question, it really needs, uh, we have to somehow reach out those tenants. Uh, one way or another, uh, any other question for Mr. Gould? Well, before, uh, say goodbye to you, but I just want to say thank you very much for the hard work. Uh, and also thank you very much for the, for, uh, I see the crew all over the place and doing the infrastructure upgrades and all that. And and they're very, uh, professional and polite, uh, we need that and thank you.
You're welcome, thank you very much, I appreciate the time today, again, if you have any questions, please contact main office or our website, thank you.
Thank you. The speaker, the second speaker is Mr. Marquez, Mr. Marquez, before I hand you the floor. I just want to say thank you very much for obliging without with my request, I know we talked, uh, Friday. And you, I mean, I left you a message on Thursday, Friday, and you called me during the weekend and we arranged this, uh. Present, uh, this schedule, I really appreciate your hard work and obliging with my, uh, my request, sir.
And and I totally appreciate it, uh, Harry, and and really, uh, it it was, uh, for me, an education. You know, learning a little bit more about Crescent Valley and the community there. Um, I, I, the reason I, I, I am speaking, uh, this evening and I appreciate. This opportunity to, 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 uh, speak to the, to meet the community and the town council. It's to talk about the Caltrans, uh, District Seven, District Seven is the local Caltrans office. In Los Angeles, that represents Los Angeles and Ventura County. Uh, but we do have a program, um, that, uh, out there which is called the City Ambassador Program. Um, and, uh, it really is an effort to, uh, to reach out, uh, to, uh. Learn about the communities, engage the communities and the activities that we do and to answer questions that, uh, that the communities may have. So, uh, let me try to, if I, if I may, uh, uh, try to share a, a screen.
Sure, go ahead.
The ambassador program.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, um, the City Ambassador Program, it took us a couple of years to kick it off. Um, uh, and, uh, when we had our, uh, previous district director. He saw the needs for, uh, for Caltrans as we're changing culture from just focusing on the highways really to, uh. To engaging our communities and our partners in the decision making that we make. Uh, so that they, uh, so that everybody is aware of the, the, uh, activities that we do, um, uh, in the organization. So, uh, the City Ambassador Program, um, this is, uh, overall, the, the purpose of it. Is, uh, to foster communication and to strengthen partnerships, uh, with our, uh, not only our local agencies. But our communities, uh, out there, uh, and as I mentioned, yeah, it was, it was good to, uh, sit back and to listen to. Uh, the, the issues and the concerns of the communities and some of the progress that the community has made up in Crescent Valley. So, uh, we're looking for, uh, uh, steady communication with partners to plan, maintain, operate, sustain and deliver transportation related improvements. Um, and then, uh, we're also internally looking at, uh, uh, leadership development and how we communicate. Uh, with, uh, with the public and, uh, let them know about, uh, how our organization operates. Uh, District Seven, as I mentioned, we cover both, uh, Los Angeles and Ventura County, so we have, uh, uh, forty-two freeways and highways. Um, fifteen hundred, uh, fifteen thousand, uh, fifteen hundred lane miles. Uh, we cover ninety-eight cities in, uh, both, uh, LA and Ventura County. Uh, uh, nearly eleven million people, uh, five hundred ninety-eight local elected officials. And, um, contracts, construction and maintenance, contracts worth, uh, two point one billion dollars. And we have over forty construction projects, uh, that are worth about, uh, four hundred million dollars currently. Now, the ambassador program is comprised of, um, we, uh, we have our district director who is currently Tony Tavoras. And our chief deputy, Gloria Roberts, so they pretty much cover the, the county areas. Uh, but each of the, uh, de- uh, district deputies in the different areas. Covers about ten jurisdictions, so, uh, for myself, uh, and Paul Merkels, I'm the, uh. Uh, actually the deputy district director for, for planning and local assistance and I also do, uh, the freight, uh, type. Efforts that the district works on, um, if you notice, uh, uh, you know, like Crescent. The Crescent Valley is unique in that it's unincorporated. So it, it's mostly geared towards cities, but at the same time, we also deal with, with the counties. And, uh, and there, uh, and I have the, the honor of, of being your, uh, your ambassador. To, to answer questions of activities that, that occur in, uh, from Caltrans in your, uh, in your area. So some of the discussion topics that in our, uh, ambassador meetings that, that we have, uh, been attending. And this has been, uh, going on for, for almost a year now and, um, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to hook up, uh, Harry is able to, to contact me and I'd be able to, uh, to meet with you. Is, uh, discussion topics include, um, the big ones really have been the homelessness, um. Uh, issues that, that we all face, uh, as we have to turn the state, uh, um. We're under the governor's, uh, executive order, uh, twenty-three twenty. Um, we're looking at, uh, different types of grants that have projects that, that impact the communities. Uh, Senate Bill One Grants from the, from two thousand seventeen. Um, really increase the funding for, uh, really fix it first and maintenance. Uh, and preservation type projects, because we're really, we're falling behind, uh, on, uh, the needs that we had out there on the highway system. Um, local assistance, uh, funds like the safety, uh, the, um. Safety funds that, uh, safer access school, the active transportation grants, the bridge, uh, the bridge, uh, grant. That go out to the communities, to the cities, uh, that we monitor because we're, uh, designated by federal highway administration to monitor it. Uh, and some of the planning grants that are out there, uh, a lot of the communities, um, don't have. Uh, uh, the funding for, uh, technical assistance and planning, especially as it relates to transportation, so. Um, there's a competitive, uh, uh, process, not only statewide, but through, uh, through the region. In this case, it would be through, uh, the Southern California Association of Governments region and, um, they do a good job of. Dispersing it amongst the, the, the five counties that they represent. Um, and, uh, the department, Caltrans, we really are looking, uh, towards, uh, equity and small, uh, business engagement. And, and the contracts that, uh, that, uh, we award out to, uh, the construction and maintenance. That type, um, uh, projects. Um, again, maintenance permits and agreements, uh, when there's, uh, concerns about. Or requests for relinquishments of some of our, um, uh, state highways that are within cities. Um, and, uh, disposal of the excess land. And then just, uh, collaboration with our, uh, regional, subregional partners, uh, to develop, uh, modal, modal transportation improvement. That's more than just the, the highway, because right now, uh, we're, because of how expansive, um. Uh, highway expansion is, it's more looking at not, uh, not movement of vehicles, but movement of people. So we look at different, uh, transportation options, um, including, uh, transit, uh, active transportation and, and other options. So, uh, yeah, in our approach to, uh, pathway to, um, to, uh, collaboration. Um, uh, especially with regards to, um, to. to how, how do we deal with the homeless and, and, and sheltered? Because this has really been a, a difficult topic. And especially, you know, with the pandemic and with the governor's restrictions of, 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 of Caltrans removing folks from the state right of way unless there's an immediate hazard. It, it's, it's really working with the local agencies to, to, to see what we could do to address folks that are in encampments and using parcels that, that perhaps, you know, are, are safer for them to be in. So it, it is a difficult challenge that, that we're still faced with. The pandemic even made it a little more difficult because of the restrictions of, of removing the homeless. And, you know, it, it, it's just a, it's been a difficult situation, but at the same time, we have made some progress working with organizations, with cities like the city of LA in, in approaching this issue. So just, just to see this map here of encampments and tents on the state right of way, the Caltrans state right of way, you see people in, in Ventura and LA counties, the tents. So there, there's quite a, quite a bit up and down the, in the map that we can see here. So that's, you know, we, we definitely have had this crisis going, going on. And it really had been, you know, the governor and the state has, has seen it as, as really a crisis and, and, you know, really call for action on, on, on approaching it and working with our, with our city agencies. But it's not only that. It's really a multi-pronged approach. And some of the successful partnerships that we've developed are with the Department of Mental Health because there are, of course, mental health needs that some of the homeless folks have. Substance abuse, so working with LA County Substance Abuse Prevention Control. Employment, the short-term motel stays, Department of Public Social Services for benefits of, of the families. And community-based organizations have also been involved as well as, as the Social Security Administration. So here you have agencies that we've been working very closely to, to try to address the, the issue the best we could. So you have PATH, you have the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, of course, the city of LA, and the county. And then, so, you know, even though homeless has been, been a topic of concern, we as ambassadors can field questions and like, you know, I'm a, my area is, is in planning and local assistance. But if there's any questions with regards to activities that, that Caltrans undertakes or just questions about how things were, then, and, and folks don't know who to go, go to, then, you know, I'd do the, one of the initial points of contact to get, to get the, the public or the, the cities that are, are represented to the right folks in, in Caltrans. We, we can be available for, for meetings, you know, generally if there's quarterly meetings or if there are meetings that, if you have officials that you want to, to meet with, with our staff on certain issues, then, then that's something that definitely the request can come in and, and we'd be happy to, to, to come out and to meet. So with that, I could take some questions.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have any questions for Mr. Marquez? No, Mr. Marquez.
Melanie Traxler has her hand up.
Hi.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Hi, thank you, Paul. Yes, this was an informative discussion. I, I didn't know that Caltrans was so engaged in addressing some of the homeless issues, but I, I do know that everything is creeping and spreading out anywhere, so it's good to be proactive. But just looking at some of the slides that you had, I wondered too, there's this aspect, it's, it's not always related to homelessness, but the, the growing concern for just, you know, illegal dumping and trash as well. And is, is that a component of what you do with that? It's because that is starting to kind of become a hazard along freeways as well. Could you respond to that?
Yes, it is. And, and that's, that's, that, that's another thing, maintenance and, and trash on the freeway. And the, the issue there is, is we're very much understaffed. We do have a rotation of maintenance crews going out. But again, the, the problem with that is they pick it up and then the next three days or so, it's back, the, 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 the debris is back, garbage is back. So what we've done also is promoted or adopt a highway-type program in, in order to deal with, with trash pickup. Where communities, you know, adopt a, a segment of, a small segment of, of the highway or freeway in their communities and help out there. When it does come to those hazardous type dumps, definitely that is something that, that we need to be aware of. We have the, we have the, the surveys online on the Caltrans website or just, just call into, you know, the Caltrans maintenance and then, then we will do our best to respond to it.
Any other question? Melanie, is that satisfied? If you want, we can add your email address at the end or maybe your email address on the chat and, and people have any other questions, they can email you, Paul. Can you do that?
Okay, that'll be, that'll be good. Let me do that.
Yes, thank you, Paul, for addressing that.
And also, we do have our Road and Transportation Committee. It would be love to have you and, and speak. I will forward your info to the committee chair and we'll, she'll contact you and maybe we can make it another presentation. Maybe we'll have it a public type of a event that you can address this one more time if it's possible.
Okay, sounds great.
Great. Okay. Again, thank you very much and good to have you. All right. Item number eleven, public comments. This is a non-agenda items only. Please submit a speaker card to President and the Vice President in this time. Speak aloud two minutes. Counsel may ask questions or respond to the speakers, but there will be no debate or decision. The president may refer the matter to appropriate committee for investigating or report be requested. Okay. Public comment is closed. Okay, item number twelve, Council Business Treasury Report. You all received Treasury Report via, I'm sorry.
Oh, Harry, I thought I saw some questions in the chat.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay. All right, you want to, are you, you speaking or are you just sending this, this Catherine?
I'm happy to speak. I'm.
You got two minutes.
Sure. I'm just hearing about the censure of Johnny Brookbank and I'm just interested in further information regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other speaker?
Yes, I have my hand raised. Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, it wasn't clear how we were supposed to speak, so it might be helpful to explain that since we can't submit a speaker card. Okay, so I'm also kind of attending tonight because I understand that there's been some questions circulating about Johnny Brookbank. And it's really kind of caused me to reflect further and I would like to just kind of get a little more information about, you know, first of all, or whatever could be publicly shared about that.
Okay. Anything else or do you want to continue? I can't hear you. Hello? Hello? Hello?
It'd be really helpful to get agendas, some concept of a better understanding of what the Chrysanthemum Valley Town Council is, is expected to do for our community. And I'm sorry, I'm getting connection, I'm getting a notice my internet might be unstable. Are you all able to hear me still?
You're breaking off.
Yes.
Okay. So in having sat through tonight, I, I know there's these various committees. There's the CV Chamber, there's the CVCA, there's the Land Use Committee, and then of course, there's the Town Council. And quite honestly, as a community member, I'm not really sure what the difference is between these groups and organizations and representation. And if I could request, if there, maybe to get a presentation on that to explain to the community. If there's a resource already available on your website to help explain the difference and how to have input, then to be directed to that would be helpful.
Can, can you leave your email or your contact so we can have the, have their, the secretary will contact you?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I'm wondering if anyone ever responds to the emails submitted to the town council site. I've submitted emails and I never hear, with questions, and I never hear any, any response.
It comes to me, it comes to me, but Cindy, I never got any email from you. If it comes from, where did you go ahead and submit it?
It, it was the town council site, website.
When was it?
About a week ago.
Okay, I'll double check, but I haven't received. Usually if I receive anything, I will correspond or I call directly.
Okay.
I will double check again if, if, if it got lost somewhere.
I can send another one.
Go ahead.
I can send another.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Okay.
Yes, one more. This is Liz Benbrooks again. I don't know how to raise my hand in Zoom. But I also wanted to make a comment regarding Johnny Brookbank's censure. I'm just wondering what materials related to that can be publicly released because it seems like none of that has been? And if there's a, a process for censuring board members, if that's public? And as to what the process that you follow for that is? Because I haven't seen anything to that effect.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any other comments? Can you leave your contact number, Melanie, again? Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Public comments is closed. Item number twelve, Council Business Treasury Report. You all received the treasure via email. And Donna sent everybody a copy. Do I have a motion to accept the, the report? So, okay, so move seconded, oh, Carrie moved seconded, seconded by Soffel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, committee report. I'll start with Aram. Go ahead. Aram?
Thanks, thanks, Harry. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to speak generally about the investigation committee and its investigation and ultimate censure. Hopefully this will answer some of the questions that were raised by Liz and Melanie and others. So just so you know where we're headed, Liz, Melanie and everyone else, most likely tomorrow or in the next couple of days, after the investigation committee finishes redacting some of the names of some private individuals that are in the report, the report, its exhibits and the ultimate censure notice will be posted on the Chrysanthemum Valley Town Council website. I've spoken with Johnny, Johnny Brookbank. He will also be distributing the report after we post it along with the censure notice. So a lot of the questions that you had are going to be part of or explained in the report. But to take a step back very quickly as to how we got to that ultimate report, there were several complaints that were received from community members and council members about bylaw violations and confidentiality violations by Johnny. The, in response to Liz's question, the bylaws have a very specific process and procedure on how complaints are to be handled, how they are to be kept confidential, how if they are serious enough, a special meeting is supposed to be called. An investigation committee put together. The investigation committee has thirty days to review things, issue a report, and then an ultimate subsequent special meeting is to be conducted. Those were the steps that were ultimately taken. The complaints, as I said, came in. A special meeting was held unanimously. An investigation committee was formed. The bylaws note that the president is to choose the members. I wasn't on the investigation committee. We had three members who did a spectacular job and spent thirty days reviewing the complaints, reviewing witnesses, looking at social media posts and the like. Their job was difficult, of course, like everyone else's these days because of the lockdowns and the COVID issues. Ultimately, they did issue a nineteen-page report that was circulated and a special meeting was held on Monday night. Mr. Brookbank was also there. He gave a very honorable response, was considered. Ultimately, the entire council decided against removal and a two-month censure was voted upon up to and including June thirtieth. And that, that also passed unanimously, even though we only needed a two-thirds vote. That ultimate censure is going to be part of the notice that I discussed and part of the report that's going to be posted after some of the redactions of some of the names of witnesses are going to be taken out. I wasn't planning on giving such a long, long report. I was basically going to explain that there were complaints. We follow the bylaws. We had investigated. I was basically going to explain that there were complaints, we followed the bylaws, we had an investigation committee, a report. And a subsequent special meeting, but because of the good questions from Liz and uh Melanie, I thought I'd go a little bit deeper. So uh that is uh the report for the investigation committee. And I want to, like we did before, um I want to thank uh Chris, I want to thank uh. Uh Jeffrey and Donna for doing a very good job under difficult circumstances. Um and that ends my report, Harry.
Thank you very much. Okay, um scholarship? Ted and uh.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
I did send out of the scholarship application to um the two public schools, high schools in this area. Which is uh CB High School and also Clark Magnet. And um they um the administrators have gotten back to me that they um will send it out to the students. And uh we'll be seeing the application soon.
The deadline is April thirtieth for receipt of applications.
Do we have posted in our website?
I don't think so. That's a good point. I I'll I'll talk to Donna about that.
And also put it on our Facebook.
Okay.
Just in case, uh because uh there's no schools, well, I know they put it through the uh the bulletins. Uh just in case if uh any of the kids misses it. So that'd be great. And uh if we need to, the if if the time is not enough, do we have time to? Uh maybe extend it a week or I'm just guessing.
Um I think, I think we were thinking two weeks before, but then we we added a week. So I I think um, well, I'll talk to Soffol to see, see how that goes. We'll decide if.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Okay, Desiree, is Desiree around? No, Desiree's not around. She usually usually give a very precise report in regards of the road um streets and roads. Uh other than that, uh Joanne, do you want to say something about the sc- uh the fundraising? I mean, uh our events or or?
Sure, so we have received a commitment from the county for five thousand dollars. I don't believe we've received the money yet, but we have received a commitment for a contribution of five thousand dollars, which will help us with scholarships. Um we are also looking at um having a pancake breakfast either possibly at the country fair. But we're not sure exactly when that will be and if we'll be able to do it. If not then, then in the fall, possibly at the um Crescent Valley High School. Um they're still not issuing permits for any outside activities. So we um need to kind of hang tight with that until we know what the district's planning um for outside activities. But we're hoping to conduct a pancake breakfast sometime this year.
That would help, that would help our clubs and for their upcoming year. All right, that concludes, well, no, I got corresponding. Soffol, anything on corresponding? Nothing, huh?
No, I checked the mailbox, it was empty. So uh everything uh that was received previously, I took pictures of and sent to you.
Yes, I know, I saw that. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And uh again, I want to thank the uh everybody for being here today. And wish you all a very wonderful weekend. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice weekend.
Have a nice weekend, guys.
Be safe, everybody.
Night, everybody. Have a good weekend.